We'll bring our regular city council meeting to order. It is Monday, April 22nd, 2013, 7:00 PM. If there's anyone present who may require special assistance to participate in this public meeting, please let us know, we'll try and assist you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Petter.
Here.
Councilmember Crum?
Here.
Councilmember Pough?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember LePiper?
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is to approve the agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second it.
Are there any questions or comments? Motion in the second, Councilmember LePiper.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Tonight's agenda has been approved. Agenda item number four is approve the consent agenda. This is to approve the minutes of the April 8th, 2013 city council meeting. Set date of Monday, May 6th, 2013 for an extra regular city council meeting. Approve claims register and building permits were approved for Brian Klein and Justin Ilers.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, but any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Motion in the second, Councilmember LePiper.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fauch.
Aye.
And Crum.
Aye.
Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Agenda item number five was discuss and approve a Class C liquor and Sunday sales license for Doc's Roadhouse. Everything is in order, we received everything back from the state, so...
I make a motion to approve Class C liquor and Sunday sales license for Doc's Roadhouse.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember LePiper.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
And Crum.
Aye.
Agenda number five, liquor license for Doc's Roadhouse is approved. Agenda item number six is discuss and approve proposals for dates to water plant. There's probably going to be several questions on this, somebody else Scott come up and talk about it. I don't want to talk about the prices right now, but kind of let you know why the difference is, where we're at on the prices and everything, so we can decide if we do want to approve that deal, or if we want to kind of rebuild the one that doesn't include some of the technical aspects.
You should have got a copy of each one of these. This has been quite a process. It's not real easy to do because it's all kind of Greek to me on these controls, so all I could do was have them come in and say, "I want to update my controls." So both these companies are looking at it in a little bit different way of doing things, which is both good. But there's a little difference in the price, so Jetco Electric, I've never dealt with them before, they have sales reps that stop regularly, and this was through Iowa Pump, they brought them over, and basically, the way it looks to me their bid is they're going to replace all those little control panels, it'll all be updated with PLC, you know, the whole panel will be changed to touchscreen. So basically, I'll have the same operation I have now, only with updated controls. I was having trouble finding anybody that wanted to even bid this, there's not a lot of companies that do this, and we work with Process Measurement out of Omaha, which is Bud DeGraff, I don't know, Mike's probably heard us talk about Bud before, and Randy, and some of them, he's been dealing with our controls and our wastewater and water for, what, maybe thirty-some years. He probably knows that water plant better than I do. So I contacted him, he works through Lakeland Engineering, so I asked him if they'd be interested in it. "Oh yeah, we do that." So they came up with about five guys, and went through and looked at everything, and started working on it, and the difference in the money is, if you get to looking at it, if I understand it right, and I know by talking to them, is with Lakeland Engineering, we will be all hooked up to a laptop, and through the Internet, and well, I will be able to do my laptop at home, anywhere, my truck, anywhere, I can see what that plant's doing, make adjustments, to where the other one is just going to be basic. That's a pretty good, the way it reads in there to me, and the way they've explained it to me, they'll have, that will keep all kinds of memory and data on what each one of my filters are doing, what my tower are doing, it'll keep control, all that, they'll have the capability of automatic backwashing my filters, which now we do manually, which could be a cost savings. So we backwash like every other day. If we're set up to backwash only when those filters need it, they may not backwash that often, which would be some kind of a savings down the line, you know, I wouldn't know how much or how substantial that would be, but would make things run a lot more efficient. So I know there's quite a bit of difference in the money, I don't know how else I can explain what you guys want to know, but if you have any questions, well, I'll try to answer them, so...
I was hoping you'd have all the answers, Scott, and the wind over my head, but what answer this for me, when looking at the Jetco's piece, is it the 4998, and Randy, is this time to talk about this, or is it more...
Well, I think just on the price issue, I just think, you know, we just wanted to be careful if we decided we wanted to go back and ask them, does this include computer monitor? No, we want to add a computer and stuff, we don't want them really to know what the other prices are.
I think what we're talking about is like, do we need to have Jetco come in and say, "Okay, we want this through a laptop with the software, the whole works, all intertwined," which they have not bid it, the way it looks to me they have not, because it says nothing about a laptop and Internet service and all that kind of stuff in Jetco's bid, but there is in Lakeland. Do we need to, I'm sure that's going to up their price, but I don't know how much. That's what we're kind of, Randy and I have kind of talked about, if that is what you think we ought to do, or now also, you know, Jetco's out in Altoona, Lakeland Engineering's in Omaha, their service would probably be quicker. I know Jetco has 24-hour service, I mean, they'll send a rep out, or a service personnel if they have a problem, you know, right away, and so Lakeland's closer, but, and you know, Lakeland, we've dealt with them on several other things, but there is a little bit of difference here in the price, so... I think what Randy and I have talked about too is, you know, this may be the time to go ahead and spend the extra money to be computerized, because we may think five, six years down the line, we need to do this, probably going to cost more than that difference to do it then. Plus, we've talked for the last year or so about having Internet service to the water treatment plant for my use as far as information, and now I bring my reports up here and do them, and Marilyn emails them for me, because, you know, DNR is pretty much requiring not, that they like us to do all of our reports electronically now, and a lot of places are doing that, so it's all going to that, so we've been talking about that, so we're kind of killing two birds with one stone on that too. We'd be, all I'd have to do is get a printer for the laptop, and I'd be set to go, you know, and have Internet service.
And this doesn't do that, this gives you the same thing you have now?
Uh, Jetco's, yes. The way I'm understanding it, yes.
It won't give you what you were just referring to.
Not Internet, and not all that information tied into a laptop.
Okay.
Basically, I'm going to have what I have now, only updated controls, which is what we really started out with, until I got Lakeland Engineering in there saying, "Well, while we're doing this, we should, you know..." And if you're Missouri Valley, I know I haven't been down there, I've been told I could go down and tour their new water treatment plant, but I know it's all computerized, and they say it's really, really nice, so... For the difference in the money, now might be the time to do have it, that's what we need to, that's what you guys need to determine whether, or do you think we need to have Jetco take a look at it and see if they want to bid?
Likewise.
Likewise. I mean, it's going to delay the process a little bit.
What is the option?
On Jetco's?
Yeah.
That is those level sensors. There's six level sensors, one above, well, there's eight, I guess, there's one above each filter, and one in the clearwell, one in the detention tank, tells you what the level of the water is in each one, and that's what controls it, you know, and...
Why is that an option?
And the option was there, we don't really have to replace those, they will work with, actually Lakeland is not replacing those, they'll work with what we're doing now. Jetco put it in there as an option, saying, "While we're doing it, if you want to replace them," but it's like, you know, $11,000, and they don't have to be replaced, that's why they put it as an option, so... But also Lakeland is not replacing those either, so that's not the difference in the bid, so...
Is everything else between Jetco and Lakeland pretty much the same, except...
Yeah, it's going to be, you know, PLCs, and we'll be running all the features, and you know, have touchscreen on the panels on each filter, and on the main control panel, that's all the same, it's just that Lakeland is going to put it all in, do a laptop computer, and their bid includes a computer and the software, and all, and the technology and all that. That's the difference in the bid, as far as I can see. And that's what Bud told me when he was up there working on something for me the other day, he said that was, that we would probably, he said, he told me, "We'll probably hire because of this technology that we're going to put into it," so... So I guess the question is, do you want to go ahead and go with Lakeland? Or do you want to go with Jetco, or do you want to have Jetco rebid?
But it's going to take an offer to bid as far as...
I haven't talked to them, because I wanted to get this in front of you guys first, and get your feelings, because, I mean, this is something that has to be done tomorrow, you know, I mean, another thing I know, and I haven't talked to Jetco about this, but Lakeland, and Bud's telling me, they're going to do this like in a four, five, six-month period, they will come in and maybe rehab two of my filters, and then get us used to running them, and then when we're comfortable with it, they'll come in, do the rest, split some filters aren't a big deal, about the only downtime I would probably have is when they do the main control panel, which would be done in a one-day period, they'll have everything made up, come in, shut down, slap it in. And Jetco will also, I mean, I won't have downtime with them, but I haven't talked to them about, "Are we going to do this like in one week, and then, you know, here's a procedure on how you run it, and we got to figure it out?" I mean, I know they'll show you a startup, but when your computer literate like I am, this could take a little time for me to learn, so... And that was a feature that I liked, they told me they were going to do it in slow steps. So this is also something that we may be able to, Marilyn and I have talked about, pay them what we had in the budget this year, the rest out of next year's budget, because it's probably not going to be done before the 1st of July, probably with either companies. So that's an option too, so...
So what's your recommendation?
Well, I would like to go with Lakeland, I'm really used to working with those guys, and Bud is excellent, and like I said, I can call him on the phone right now and say, "You remember when this did this last time, Bud, what did we have to do to fix it?" He can walk me through it, a lot of times I can fix it myself, you know, and if I can't, then he comes, but he's good to work with, or a good company, not that Jetco isn't, I just don't have any experience with them, and I'm sure they would do fine, but that would be my preference, but I was hoping that the money wasn't quite that far apart, but...
Or it's not apple to apple?
Yeah, that's what, because it's really hard, that's what I told Randy, it's not like the pickup, when I just called and said, "Here's what I want, give us a bid," you could all bid the same thing, this is a little bit different, when I said, "Come in, I want to update," because I couldn't tell them what I wanted to do, because I didn't know, you know, I don't know what we needed, so... That's why it's not quite apple to apple. I don't even know whether Jetco, I'm sure they have, would do the technology to do it, you know, do the Internet on a computer, I'm sure they could do that, so...
And those features on the computer, on the little alarms, we've talked about that, but the laptop, the accessibility to, if there's a troubleshoot, something, or there's a system shutdown, a breakdown, or failure, capable of those things, are those significantly better under the technology side?
Yeah, the PLCs, like, are all the same, they will have that information in them, but say I had a problem with something, or we needed that data, they would probably have, the tech would probably have to come, hook up to that PLC to read what it's been doing. With Lakeland's, the way they're doing it, that information will be in the computer, you know, it'll tell me when my filter backwashed, how long it took for the run before it needed to, then I can make adjustments, say, "Okay, I got more water going through this filter than I do this filter, this one's backwashing more," I can adjust that, to make them all flow even, things like that, that information's there. So the PLC will have that, but they will have to come in, probably hook a computer up to it to read that information, so you're going to have it all right there, basically, you know, that'll be on the desk down there on that computer, what that whole plant's doing, and you can go look at all that information.
Can you control the plant remotely then as well?
I don't, I don't think so, run the computer like if I had it at home, but that's not a big deal, the main thing is, it'd be nice to just be able to pull that up and make sure everything's running the way it's supposed to, because, you know, if we have, right now during stormy season, if the power blinks off at my place, I go to the water plant, because I don't know whether the power went out, I don't know if I got a problem there, because the power outage is a little good for me, I'm pretty good, so that could save me, you know, having to run down there at 2:00 in the morning to see if we got a problem. Also, we could go with a smartphone, wouldn't have to take a laptop home, you know, if you had a smartphone, you could bring that up on that, on the Internet, that way too, so that would be an option also, eventually to do.
Well, probably not being able to control it remotely is probably a good thing, because then you have to worry about info security.
Right, right.
You have to worry about Dennis getting on his computer, the cat hacking into it, and shutting our operations down.
That's not a big option. That's not a big option, of being able to make changes, because once it's running, I don't make changes, to speak of, you know, I don't need to unless I have a problem, you know, it pretty much runs itself, you know, it's all automated to run itself, so I don't need to make changes, I mean, except my kitchen table, and change this, and change that, you know, so that's not, that's not a big deal, but being able to see what that plant's doing at any time, if I'm on vacation, you know, if I have a smartphone, I'm on vacation, and the guys call me and say, "Hey, dude, we got this going on," you know, and I can say, "Well, let me look and see what's going on here," you know, because I might be able to walk, I could walk them through something, you know, and that would be the greatest feature. We've talked about before, possibly putting a camera, you know, and I've talked to Bill about it before, and, you know, showing it onto my panel, so I could bring it up at home on my home computer, and just to see, because I can see those numbers, I know what's going on, and watch those numbers every day, you know, so that would be the greatest, the best part about that computer.
And it's not a matter of if, it's we have to do this?
Um, yeah, the controls need to be changed, because all those control boards, we can't replace, we can't, they're outdated, so... So I guess if we're going to update, I guess my thing is we just will build the full distance, like Randy and I were talking, you know, there's no use doing it one way, and then five years from now saying, "Well, we need to have this hooked up to computer so we know what's going on," and probably going to cost more than that difference than to upgrade again. That's the way, that's kind of the way I look at it, but...
And as far as the budget, the dollars, Randy?
We, yeah...
Yeah, we got 40 in there for this year, we put 20 in for next year, so for one thing with this, if it's going to drag you out a little bit, that's not going to be a problem, so we're going to overlap, so we got plenty on the budget for either bid, so...
I believe when we, I got the bid with like over about a year and a half, so we just got one for budget purposes, that's really hard to do, you know, so that's how much it's changed in a year and a half, and that was from, basically from Jetco, it was a different company, but through Iowa Pump that gave me the preliminary bid just for budget purposes, and it was, you know, right at, you know, in the 40 range, and it's gone up substantially.
So as it stands right now, eyes only, we've been the only ones that got this information on these bid numbers?
Correct.
So if we want to ask Jetco, since we have the time to come in, then we could get a live bid from them to compare what we have from Lakeland?
Yes, and I would, I would probably use Scott, they probably wouldn't have to come and ask Scott, just tell them that we want to go, everything online, put this up with the computers, what we need to reload in, and they could unshut this issue.
Yeah, I don't think they'd have to come back over, they could just re-bid it from that.
That's kind of what I think we should do, I'm leaving by, unless you need to let Lakeland know for that, because we haven't made any of these bids public there.
Right, and I agree, that's, we've talked about that, and I was thinking that might be the fairer way to do it, you know, we want to make sure we're fair with this, you know.
Yeah, it does stay valid for 60 days, so we know a little time here.
Yeah, and Jetco's was, I think, only valid 30, but I've talked to him a couple times, so I'm sure that will be, and if they haven't rebid it, it's not valid.
But do you call him tomorrow?
Yeah, I could call later in the morning, and I've talked to him a couple times already, he's called me a couple times, and see, I said, "Well, we'll wait for another bid," you know, "Okay, I understand that," so that 30-day deal's not a problem, and it's going to be different anyway, so it'll be basically a new bid, so...
And I would just say, I agree with you, Scott, being around a while in the city government, Bud, I do know Bud, who Bud is, that company, we've dealt with them for 30 years, they know our plan inside and out, there's some value in doing business with that company. Secondly, you know, how they both thought about this, you know, I'm not, I mean, I'm for going back to Jetco and getting an updated bid, but, you know, they kind of say, "Here's probably what you need," Lakeland said, "No, here's really what you need to update it to..."
Yeah, they said, "Here's what you need, but here's what we can do to really make this the way it should be."
Right, right.
Like I said, it's real hard to get apples to apples, now, I can get closer with it now, tell them, "Jetco, here's what I want you to add to your bid."
Right.
I'll do, I'll call them in the morning, I'm sure they could have something back there by the next council meeting, and I will discuss this with Bud, and tell him what we're doing, and then he'll be fine with that, so... Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions that they want Scott to ask, please, can you call or anything, or? I say, basically, I'm for into what's going on down there, so that's why I asked Scott to try and explain it, so, it's making him ask any questions, we need to right now, so... Okay, agenda number seven, number six, we'll hold off to it, nothing to bid. Agenda number seven is a point nine fill representative, currently that is me, but we need someone else to take my spot to go out and put the city's interests.
When was that again?
Those are the second Wednesday of each month. And they hold true, they have a, as far as I know, they've never had a special meeting or anything, it's been the second Wednesday.
Do we still have the option of not having somebody on the council, but appointing somebody from the community?
Yes, we do.
So you wouldn't consider staying on it?
No, I think it has me something on the council now.
There is an option there, yeah.
As you notice, I have this added to the agenda for a reason, so...
I move we could rotate, worst-case scenario, past paying around, the last night's is bad, you know, bad for me generally, and I, you know, town members in the city, I know that's a popular night for activities and stuff, and that's probably always going to be difficult, and we appreciate you taking that for so long, but I'd be glad to take my share, if it came to that, if it wasn't something that, you know, didn't have a top with anyone. When's the next meeting?
The next meeting is not until, you know, the second meeting next month, so, there will be another council meeting before then, that somebody could be appointed, so...
I'll probably think about it.
That's fine, that's why I wanted to break it up now, because it's a very good week, so...
Maybe a citizen would like to do it.
If you've got anybody who wants to help, you know, we just got a... Yeah, we had Ron Holt, he's ever since the inception of the landfill commission, so 15 years, something like that. And, yeah, then we, I was kind of deciding a couple years ago, it should be somebody on the council, since we're spending so much money, you know, to look after the city's interest, and Ron always did, I mean, Ron went through everything, I mean, he looked at all the members, he made sure, I mean, he was always asking questions, he made sure that they were doing things right, and he still goes to the meetings, for the last year and a half, he's not on the commission anymore, but he's still been at every meeting, so, except for, I think, one, when he was in hospital having something done, so... Agenda item number eight, discuss the city audit. We had received that, most everything this year is pretty much follows in with past years. One of their findings is naturally, I'm just actually skipping straight to page 41, and we'll go back forward if anybody has any questions on the end numbers or whatever. First thing is segregation duties, you know, that's been on there, as Mike knows, ever since the beginning of time, but when you've got a one or two-person, you know, a two-person office, you really have problems segregating duties, so we're basically the check to make sure that we verify the bank balances and stuff like that, that are supplied to us each month. The next page, the council minutes, they didn't find anything that had not been approved that we did outside of not being approved. They did state that there was one enclosed session, the minutes didn't record the specific chapter code, but I believe that we let them know what that was, and they agreed, that was fine. There was also one that we did not have published within the 15 days as required by law, and also that one did not have include the summary of dispersments, so I'm not sure, usually that must just have been a little look on the dispersment part, because that's always been in there, that I recognized. They also mentioned that in addition, the council passed a resolution to approve a pool percent increase in wages, but not specific increases, so basically this year, instead of when we do the resolution for wages, we'll have to spell out each person's wage, kind of like we did with the pool board, we have an addendum that shows everybody's wage, and I just, what the overall total would be. Deposits and investments, no instances of noncompliance with the investments. They say that we do not have listed maximum authorized non-entrepreneurial depository used, but at one time we did have that on file, so I'm not sure why that, why that would have been carried over, so I'll have to check into that, we'll just have to make sure we do that, so... Revenue notes, no instances of noncompliance there. Financial condition, they just said it to the end of June, the debt service fund had a deficit balance of $9,000. Our response was the deficit will be eliminated by transfer, and that was fine, and that's what we always do every year, we transfer that out eventually, so... Dispersments, they would like us to have the front and back images of checks, and the bank does not do back images right now down here, so if they ever do, we will, but this time they don't, so... Excess balance, the balance in the local option sales tax was in excess of the funded disbursements, but that was money that we'll be spending, that was earmarked for this year for some roads and stuff like that, so that's why that was not spent all the way The next one was sale of real property, this was one where we held a public hearing to sell a lot for $1,000, and we've never been paid for that, so we will need to either collect on that, or we're going to have to, I don't know, have to ask council what we have to do as far as how we go about rescinding that offer, sell that land, so...
Was there an expiration?
I don't believe there was, but according to what they've got here, they must usually expect that once you have the public hearing, that you would have, so, yeah, so...
And you probably wouldn't... You probably wouldn't want to go into a new fiscal year, I mean, we're closing up the books for this year, so we need to get that paper taken care of.
Well, this was actually last year, so, so this would have been what ended last year, June 30th of last year, so we're already...
Those two years we should get it taken care of, 20 years.
And so those were the findings of the audits, so, like I said, all but about two items were the same as what they usually have listed every year, and some of those are out of our control just due to our size, you know, we can't hire four or five people to be in the office and manage the city affairs. As far as anything else, anybody have any questions on anything else further up in the budget? This is available for anyone that wants to look at it, we have copies here on file, and, you know, it's public records, anyone that wants to see it can definitely take a look at it, so... Anybody have any questions? You know, I thank Marilyn for helping with that, they said she was great to us, ladies, so, they moved, caught things for them, went pretty good, so, the only things they had to wait on was when they asked questions of me, so, a few times, it's like, did I? Okay, if there's no questions, we'll go on to agenda number nine. Agenda number nine is hire Bill McInnes, a McInnes law firm to represent Logan in the case of Logan versus Johnson. And Mike as spoke to Mr. McInnes, and I did also, and he was willing to take this.
And we're just hiring him for this particular case?
This is for this case all week, yes, correct.
I make a motion to hire Bill McInnes of McInnes Law Firm to represent Logan in the case of Logan versus Johnson.
I'll second that.
Are there any questions or discussion? Councilmember Flippin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fauch.
Aye.
Ann Crump.
Aye.
Agenda item number nine is approved. Agenda item number ten, citizens' questions and comments. If there's no questions or comments, I'll enter, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Flippin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fauch.
Aye.
Ann Crump.
Aye.